All right, it's 6:00 PM, March 18th, 2024. Today's our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the ISB. Do you have a quorum established? Where everybody please stand up for a moment. Thank you.
Goodbye, ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to our agenda number two, which is public comments. We do have Ms. Susan Davis.
How are you? Recently, during public comments at previous meetings, a request was made to the Board that the Board consider live streaming school board meetings, your open public meetings, for the benefit of public, public taxpayers, citizens, parents, et cetera, who are interested in hearing and watching the Board conduct their business and understanding more about school activities and issues, students' success and accomplishments, and difficulties, financial matters, et cetera. And in seeing all of these parents and beautiful children here who are going to be recognized, I bet there are a lot of grandparents who couldn't come tonight who would love to be able to watch their grandchildren receive awards or recognition. To my homage, this request is not acknowledged publicly or privately because I know you can't answer in public session, but I don't know that it's going to rest. And it has not been announced whether or not a decision is made this night to live stream. Tonight, I personally know that it is four people who follow the ISB activities who are unable to attend due to they have town. One has COVID infection. One has young children at home who can't find a babysitter. One's on crutches. One's caring for an elderly parent. And these are just the ones that I know. I'm here tonight for better or worse because it's day of my safety time and with this meeting, the subject will still be that one. I live 15 miles from town and I live on a very dangerous road where there are daily pursuits by law enforcement of drug and human smuggling. While I have concerns about driving during the day, I'm terrified after dark when I'm alone on that long, lonely road. So when it's dark, it may be that we should just watch from home because it is dangerous to be out after dark. I guess recently you could make part of saying something about the woman on the Rock Springs Road who was terrified and terrorized on her way home. But how exciting to think that citizens and parents care about our school. They want to be involved. And isn't the school always asking parents to be involved? It used to be that way when I was teacher librarian and a parent of free attending school. We've always asked them to be involved in things. When my husband was a school board member for 10 years, he recalls that the Board was so excited to see members of the public in the audience at a meeting. Someone must care. Yay, somebody's excited about what's going on. Bracket ISB has the finest equipment and technology. That technology administrated with vast experience and expertise and all the resources available at your fingertips to make this happen. You should consider this idea in the interest of transparency, inclusion of the public, and consideration for any and all who want to attend board meetings, whether it be in person or virtually. I respectfully request that you, Mr. President and Superintendent Diaz, put this topic, live streaming school board meetings on the next board agenda to be discussed by all of you in public so we can hear your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, appreciate it. All right, thank you, Ms. Davis. Moving on, our agenda number three, which is our recognitions. Ms. Litas.
Good evening, and it is exciting to see such a full house. We're always very proud of our students. I'm going to ask Ms. Newman to come up and join me. We're going to start with our recognition of our elementary students. We're going to be recognizing today the elementary students who have been at a Level 5 on High Station in the area of reading. And just so y'all have a little bit of an idea of what that means, it means that these students have been reading above grade level since day one. So since the beginning, they tested out reading above grade level. And not only did they start above grade level, but as the year has progressed, they have maintained that and have continued to be above grade level. The neat thing about this program, parents and board members, is that it doesn't just test how well the kids read, but how well they comprehend what they read. So it's very exciting for me to see the number of students who not only read well, but know and understand what they read because that truly is the foundation to success. So when your name is called and you will come on up and get your certificate and be recognized, the first one is Emma Castillo. And if y'all will stay up here, we'll get a group picture again. This is perfect. It's such a great mic lesson for them too. And they can go around and shake hands there. Adeline Owens. Emma, y'all stand seriously. Mila Gonzalez. Boen Kay. And not cover your face. Good job sweetheart. Lucien Tyus. Joaquin Colomada. Antonio Montoya. Jaida Pasiel. Guillermo Masia. Angelina Moore. Adam Stover. And the last but certainly not least, Eric Goron. Thank you, parents, for bringing them. We're very, very proud of them. Keep up the good work kiddos. And I'll ask Ms. Jimenez to join me for our secondary awards. And we have two UYL awards first that we missed last week and so we want to be sure to, or last month, so we want to make sure that we recognize them. The first one is Justice York, and he placed first place in 7th grade spelling. And then we'd also like to recognize Alina Raffl, and she's out playing tennis. So we'll give it to mom. Justice, help us with these so we can hear her to other pitches. Right here. A little good recintific. And then we have another group that we would like to recognize, and that is our Tiger Ret Basketball Girls. They had a great season and really represented us very well. So they have earned some all-district honors. So we'll start with Sydney Rodriguez, First Team All-District. Congratulations. Suzie Calamantes, Second Team All-District. Asania Rodriguez, Honorable Mention. Noelani Morris, Honorable Mention. Hannah Law, Honorable Mention and Academic All-District. And Angelina Waddell, Academic All-District. Good job girls, congratulations. Thank you. And I'm going to announce the coach, Delilah, so thank you, Coach. Great job.
All right, moving on to item four on our agenda, which is the Consignment Agenda. We need to go over our... A meeting until February 8th. The minutes of the February 8th. We've got a special meeting on February 12th, regular meeting. Oh, and this year's... See, the dog horse feet, they used to wave the feet down there anymore?
Um, I listened to where they waved them before. I know that they needed charge for this time, but I can definitely ask you to go back and vote.
Yeah, I don't know if you've been paying this year.
Well, we haven't used them.
What, a year before?
Yeah, in at least two, three years. But we can go back and check.
The last fee we paid was like in 2019.
And we did pay, we did have to pay the...
There was a fee that, from that amount, we could tell that it was a dog horse, but it was back into that then for the same reason.
But we can look everywhere.
Also, it's got some sort of needs here. Is your bathroom?
You're right.
Is your bathroom used to be over?
Oh, here. She's doing a good job providing that program so I can proceed without coming back.
Need anybody on the bus carrier?
Anybody in the left?
On the bus carrier?
We have two, they're interested. We're just trying to work out the dates because of work.
If not, it must have been approved. It's presenting in the minutes of February 8th, 2024 Special Meeting. February 12th, 2024 Recordings. And the issue's reports as presented. So, make some motion. Wait a second, it's all in favor. Five passes to be announced. Moving on, item five, which is informational items. Why is an intruder audit update on this?
So the first one is the Intruder Audit. Okay, so the Texas Education Agency started the Intruder Audits back in 2223. That was the very first year. Each one of our schools was tested to see how we would do if an intruder tried to get on campus. And in 2223, we were fine. In 2324, we had not heard. And so we were still waiting for our Intruder Audit. We did have our intruder designated from TPA come on March the 7th. They were stopped prior to getting into any of our buildings. So that was very good. They were stopped in the back entrance by the van hall, by a staff member, and directed to go to the office. So that's exactly what we want to happen. We want someone to see someone that's not supposed to be on campus, ask them who they are, what they need, and if they're looking for the office, they get them to the office. So that was exactly what happened. Once they checked in with the office, Mr. Jimenez did escort the representative. They checked all our doors to make sure that they were locked and that we were following our safety plan. And we were. So you can see that there were zero findings in our audit for Bracket High School. And it goes through and asks about corrective action plans. We're not required to do any type of corrective action plan for Phase 1. We did have a sign-in process, present ID, get a badge. We did, we were able to, so Luis keeps track of our daily door sweeps. And so he had the door sweep documentation that's required. So we didn't have any issues there. And then in Phase 3 was the classroom door audit. They did random sampling and all doors were closed and all doors were locked. So again, that was for Bracket High School. So between now and the end of the year, we're expecting two more because they're supposed to do every, every school, every year. So we'll have two more. And these are required just to be presented as informational items to the Board. Unless we have to do a corrective action plan, then it has to be an action item. But since no corrective action plan is necessary, it's just information.
All right, finally, is the District Calendar Update?
So today, we're also going to discuss the district calendar and we're going to just, Mr. Price will be helping me with this one. If you look at the very first attachment, it's the District Advisory Committee. And that just shows the agenda where we did meet with the District Advisory on those items, one of those being the district calendars. You can also see on the bottom the members who will be representing the community, parent, and business. And I will be meeting with them on the 19th. So I did just want to share the agenda from the district calendar meeting. The second item is when Ms. Price will start and she'll go through the process that we used this year to develop the calendars and then go through the final four, the ones that may get down to what the staff will end up voting on. Is she ready?
So the second attachment that you do have is how to weigh your considerations. So the first District Advisory Meeting, it was exploring, kind of gone over certain items and things that calendars must have on them and then other things to take into consideration. So you can kind of read through those and see, for example, for semester 10 in December, the staff worked day 7:30 before. We need to have more than 7,560 minutes of instructional time. Bad weather days, you can get a little bit flexible with to make sure that we have some way to make up days or have bad weather days. Teachers and paraprofessionals must have 187 days. And good PD days, we have, we need seven days of PD days. Include teacher workdays. First day of school can be a form of Monday, the 4th Monday in August. That's part of our DIY. Graduation must be Friday in May. And Memorial Day can't be instructional day. So those are some must-haves on the calendars. And then some things that we always consider are things about instructional minutes. Elementary currently has 465 minutes. Secondary has 408 minutes. That's because of the dismissal time at the end of the day. Flex days is something else to consider. Holidays, stock show, spring break, football schedule, six weeks instructional line-out, current calls, when homecoming gets, and then just other calendar events that somebody might have on their calendar. So basically, what we did was we introduced the calendar with this document. And then at the bottom of this, it proposed dates for calendar selection. So on February 9th, the District Advisory, we had the introduction and passed out the information to everybody who was part of the District Advisory. The 23rd, basically what they were advised to do was to go out and construct. Anybody that wanted to construct a calendar, get together in groups or make a calendar or calendars. Gave them a template so that everybody was using the same form, the same colors, the same look. So when you're counting and looking at everything, it makes it a little bit easier. So then on February 23rd, those were due. And I collected them and went through and made copies for the District Advisory. Looked at how they were similar and how they were different. And then March 8th, District Advisory, we discussed them. We looked at them. And basically, what we did is we put all of them out. We have, let's see, 13 different calendars. And basically took a copy of the calendar and took a form that I had created for votes. And so they voted for the top three calendars. So everybody in the District Advisory had the opportunity to vote for three calendars. We put all of them out there. And basically, they did come back because the votes were so close. The four that you have there in the attachments are the four on the high, the four highest votes. So the intention is to, of course, after spring break, which is now, we're going to, for you to all to look at and talk about. And then hopefully, we will get it out to the staff tomorrow or the next day to vote on. And we should put that out in a Google Form. And then we're also going to give them availability to come to the Board to vote if they have questions or they need help or anything like that. Because we do have some staff that is not familiar with Google Form or they don't feel comfortable voting that way. So we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to get their input. And then hopefully, we can bring it back April for a meeting to get approved so that we can move forward with the calendar. So if you look at the different calendars, basically, I'll go through the breakdown, go just a quick synopsis of them. So there's four calendars and a number by the calendar, how they voted in District Advisory. So you see calendar number 2, number 5, number 8, and number 11 for the ones that got those votes. Number 2 has no flex days. Staff starts August 13th. Students would start on the 22nd of August. It has 164 instructional days. It has 10 early outs. The students would begin May 29th. And then you have 7.8 days of extra minutes. So we try to have extra minutes so that if we have a school closure or we have, you know, the water turns off or something like that, we have some Google agreement there to do something for you that come up. So then calendar number 5 is again no flex days. The staff would start August 8th. Students would start on the 22nd. The last day would be May 29th. There's 166 instructional days with six early outs and there's 7.2 days of extra minutes. And then number 8 does have some flex days. Staff starts on August 5th. Students on the 15th. Last day, May 22nd. No early outs. There's 163 instructional days, but there's only 195 extra minutes. There's a hundred sixty-three instructional days, but there's only a hundred ninety-five extra minutes. So, very few extra minutes. And then number eleven does again have flex days. Staff will start on August fifth. Students start on the fourteenth. Last day would be May twenty-second. Zero early outs, a hundred sixty-three instructional days and a hundred ninety-five extra minutes. So, basically, we have two with no flex days that go a little bit a week longer. And then we have two without flex days that go shorter.
Yeah, and one of the ones without flex days has more early outs and one has less early outs. One, I think, has six and one has ten. So, we feel like we're giving the staff a very good balance to vote on. If you like flex days, there's an option for flex days. If you don't like flex days, there's two options, you know, for each. So, we do feel like this process that we used, it was definitely facilitated by the advisory committee. They had really good long discussions. That's, you know, I can, I can tell you that their conversations at the table were good. It was nice to hear them talk and hear them say things like, what about the instructional minutes? You know, this one has more instructional days, this one has less instructional days. There was the concern about the teacher workday at the beginning of the year. And I really think that all board of the calendars will address, you know, that concern. There's some additional time for them to prep their classrooms and get their rooms ready at the beginning of the year. I know that was a concern, but yet we're able to put in the P D days. When Ms. Price was going over the requirements, I just want to be really clear that those are not Bracket I S D requirements, those are T E A requirements. So, like the seventy-five thousand six hundred minutes, that's not a number that Ms. Price and I made up. That's the minimum amount of minutes. And the hundred eighty-seven days, that's their contract days. So, there's legal policy or T E A requirements behind those items that we gave them as non-negotiables. And that was just for us to make sure that we're in compliance with everything that we have to be compliant for. Even the Memorial Day, no instruction on that day. And it's actually written in the T E A policy that we can't have that. So, we'll take feedback back to the committee if y'all have some feedback. And if not, then we will proceed with taking these four to the staff. And all staff gets to vote, custodians, cafeteria workers, everybody gets to vote. And we usually leave it open for a couple of days to make sure that everybody gets a chance to vote.
You just got a four-part day, the only thing that stood out in my mind was number eight. It's a flex day on March seventh, which is the first Friday in March. This is more likely to be a four-part day next year. And I know it's a big deal for the four-part days, but we get to have the students available. That's number eight.
And that still has to be a flex day because flex days are still into the first, um, students to come. And they still do not give enough.
Yeah, it would still, so kind of like this last flex day, if we took all the kids to Loughlin, they're for space. So, it was a flex day, but we best kids over there, so we could, we could kind of.
So, with day eleven, are you going to sell the memorial room for any, any pops up?
No. So, that's very similar to what we're doing this year, okay? Which our Google room and flex days. So, if we needed to close and then needed to make up a day, a flex day would become an instructional day. Because what wouldn't that happen? So, with those days, when there's no, those calendars where there's no Google room, we have to, we have to do something. So, we either have to add a day, turn a flex day into an instructional day, but we have to do something to the calendar to make sure that we're in compliance.
All days can become instructional days and you have to look at the end of this one to do. Because you have to extend it, that's another possibility. So, in other words, if something happened in May and you don't have any, there's no room in May because we're so late.
We would go to June, we would come in May.
But would you ever do, keep that a week on the table, you don't have to worry about it?
Right. And that's, that's really helped us in previous years, especially with water. Like when we were having all the water issues, we never had to make up any of those days because we have the extra minutes.
But that's because we have flex days.
We had no flex days, correct.
So, the way it's lined up here, like two, five, eight, and then that's like, number two with the highest?
No, no, we just, we.
It's just four.
We kind of didn't know about the order, so they're not by the votes. But I think.
And even that was what the highest.
Do you have a big division on the campuses, um, should we go in for a hour?
No.
No, not at all. I mean, I was, I was pleasantly surprised. There was a big division in communication when they were talking about it, like what each one of them was most important in their eyes. But when it came down, and we can, we can upload the voting sheets. But you will, I mean, I would say it was pretty split down the middle.
So, no more like this, have to not shoot for the votes.
And the reason I went with, with four was because number, the ones that came in third and fourth place, there was a difference of one vote. So, I felt like we needed to read. And the people who weren't, who were on district advisory but who weren't on campus because they were either at Loughlin or in our meeting because it was a flex day, we put the votes out here so they can have a chance to come in and review everything and vote.
All right, now the under five, which is the entry to the public, you see that?
So, last year, we all completed pretty much the same table Mr. Jimenez presented for us last year. This year, we're all going to have a little something to say about this. This basically is our data in regards to interim assessments. So, these are the assessments that are provided by the state that allow us to kind of see how we're doing as we're getting closer to the actual STAR assessment. And so, this year, I think one of our big focuses has been to be very data-driven, to make sure that the teachers know what percentage we need to be at, that the teachers have a good understanding of who their kids are, where they are, who needs to show growth. All kids need to show growth. So, the D M that you see there is a percentage that is, did not meet. And that was for the first interim, which was taken early fall. And then the second interim, depending on the campus, was either taken in January or February. So, it was very beginning of second semester. So, I'm going to go ahead and let Ms. Price start first. And she's just going to go over some of the changes that we're seeing in twenty-three, twenty-four, some of the things that we've been talking about a little bit differently for twenty-three, twenty-four. And then each principal will go through their data and highlight and have some discussion on their data.
So, there's just a couple of things that I did want to touch on and go over. The first one is STAR ALT. And so, STAR ALT is a test that our students with disabilities would take if they meet certain requirements. And so, this year, the state has come and made some significant changes in the requirements for students that can take the STAR ALT test. And so, for us, that's really the biggest change. So, STAR ALT two test is meant to be used with the most significant cognitive disability, which really that part of it hasn't changed. But the requirement for what they've gone through is they've gone and created different columns and different areas where they have to qualify in more specific things. And so, the one that really has made a difference for us falls under the the piece in the column that initiates, it, it, I can't explain it. So, there's columns in the different, uh, specific things that you have to check through. And one of those is initiates, performs and completes self-care routines. And so, feeding, dressing, completing personal hygiene. If they can do those things, then they don't qualify for the ALT, ALT two testing. And so, we've had several of our students not qualified from last year that took it because that qualification wasn't on there. And now this year, they can't because they aren't able to do those things by themselves.
So, they may have a very severe academic cognitive delay. But because they can feed themselves and quote it themselves and get from point A to point B, they've taken the STAR ALT away from them. So, it doesn't matter, their cognitive severity, they're looking just at whether or not, not just that, but that's one of the requirements. So, several of our students can do those things by themselves. They feed themselves, they can get from point A to point B by themselves. They can drive to the bathroom by themselves, but they still have cognitive delays, that they're not going to be eligible for the STAR ALT when they've taken the STAR ALT their entire time that they've been taking STAR.
So, the, the numbers that we're talking about is, is an example. Last year, we had about sixteen students take the STAR ALT. And this year, out of those sixteen, only eight will be eligible to take that. So, what we are doing is we're just making sure that we give every educational opportunity to the students. And we have to do the state requirements. And so, we're allowing them and giving them instructional means that they, they need. But we also understand that it is highly possible that they're not going to get the approach, the needs or masters for that test.
So, that was good, honestly.
It, a little bit. Yeah, it puts us at a negative disadvantage. So, it's eight of those, so from those sixteen kids, those sixteen kids were taking a test that was appropriate for them. So, they passed because it was appropriate for them. Now, out of those sixteen kids, eight of them have been taken off from that test and are now going to take a test that is not necessarily cognitively appropriate for them. So, it's almost like we're starting off with some negatives, you know? We're starting off already at a disadvantage because it's not a cognitively appropriate test, but it is what the state is requiring. Now, we want them to test. And that's the thing is that they can have an R meeting and they can choose not to test because the R can be discussed that it's not cognitively appropriate and they can wait and not test. However, we are encouraging our students to test because we're giving them the opportunities to learn. And it also provides us with a baseline. So, maybe they're not going to pass, but it'll give us some information on where they're at and what we can do to try to continue to work with them to close that instructional gap. So, we are highly recommending that parents don't wait the test and that they still come and test so we can have a baseline. Because waiting or testing and failing counts the same for us. So, we'd rather have the data and see how our kids did than for it just to be an automatic failure because they didn't show up.
And there are, after the student's test, you can go back to R and discuss the outcomes of the test. And it doesn't affect the student in a negative light as part of regulation or being retained or moving off to the next grade level. But our committee can make that decision and move forward with where the student is, so.
And so, just for example, because our district is so small, okay? I'm going to use that number sixteen. Sixteen kids passed STAR ALT, we're at a hundred percent, okay? So, now, we're going to lose, lose those kids. So, are those, those eight that aren't going to pass are going to negatively affect our passing percentage.
Right, that's right.
I'm going to write it down as well.
And it's not just working on the system.
And all districts are very, are very uncomfortable and not happy with that decision.
So, this change is in between interim one and interim two, or this is just what's going to come?
This is what's going to come on the actual STAR test.
Yes.
So, when do they take out in terms of two?
Late.
You're ready for this? So, these don't require you to.
No. So, then the next thing to talk a little bit about is approaches, needs and masters. We've really been working really hard to get not only our students but our parents to understand as well what the differences are because it's kind of conceiving when you think approaches and when approaches allows you to go to the next grade level and approaches.
Just as passing.
Yes. But approaches basically means you're approaching the grade level, you're not on the grade level. So, where we want our students is needs and masters. So, needs basically means you meet the requirements for the state standards. And then masters is you master, like, good majority of, you master the STAR test. So, you master those standards, the state is expecting you to meet each of those grade levels. So, we've really been moving to our teachers and our students to get them to understand that so that it's not a skewed when we look at the outcomes and the accountability piece of the testing. And accountability and where we get our weeks and stuff is being bold enough because they look at growth versus achievement. So, growth is a big, huge piece of the accountability. And so, we're looking at where the kids are moving from one year to the next. And as you can see on this STAR kind of vision, that example. And the principals are kind of hoping that in just a second. But basically, where we want our kids when we're looking at all of this is we want that needs and masters. And so, if we can show that they started at one place when we are in moved forward or even from one test in our test to the next or one baseline to the next, then we're making improvement, we're making gains. That's of course what we, for our, my questions.
So, so you want to see the E M percentages?
Lower.
Lower, E M two, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you want the D M to go, to go lower. You want the approaches?
To go up.
Or, or sometimes our goal would be for our, for them to jump to needs. So, we don't want them to jump just to approaches, we want them to jump to needs. So, it's kind of hard looking at approaches and needs because if our needs is higher, then we're good. You know, we want our didn't meet at all to be, to be a lower percentage, but we want to see more growth in the needs and masters than anywhere else. But anything from approaches to masters on the accountability system counts as passing. And, and I say that very cautiously because we've been trying to put very little emphasis on that. Like, I haven't wanted to emphasize that approaches counts as passing because we don't want that to be enough, you know? So, we've been trying to say, really, we want to be looking at needs and masters, needs and masters. When you combine those two, where, where are we?
And we have to think of it as this too, because if a student is getting approaches at the end of the year on the STAR test, when they're moving along to the next grade level, they're not on grade level. So, that teacher has to start in reverse because approaches is not on grade level. So, if we send them to the next grade level on needs or masters, then they're on, for example, third grade. They've mastered those standards when they go to fourth grade, then they're ready for fourth grade content. If we constantly are sending them on approaches, which is what the state has allowed to do, we're constantly having to backtrack and fill holes and try to catch them up. And so, that's, that's hurting us as well. So, we're doing everything we can to get them to needs and masters. And you look at it here as a big group of grade levels. Our teachers look at it individually and our principals look at it individually by student in order to see exactly where they're moving. These students, including the progress in their weather's goals or what they need, what skills they need to learn. So, y'all want to talk a little bit?
Because that's my cue, right?
Yeah.
So, if you're looking at the data for our elementary, you'll see that most of the interim ones that did not meet have decreased. So, from interim one to interim two, most of the numbers are lower. So, we've had some really good gains there. Some of the notable gains, if you look at the third grade reading, we started the year with fifty percent. with fifty percent and these students have never had to take in online assessment lines before. So it went from fifty percent on the first to thirty-one percent. So that's a huge gain from fifty to thirty-one in Did Not Needs. And then their percentage of mastering was pretty significant, it went up to twenty-six percent. Then we saw huge gains for fourth grade reading, fourth grade math and fifth grade reading. Those students, if you look in the last column, they're outperforming right now students in the region. So we also, it compares us to the region for the others that have taken this assessment so that helps us kind of gauge like if we're on the right track or not. So those grade levels are outperforming the other schools in our region, which is great. And then another notable highlight is fourth grade reading has about thirty-one percent mastering the STAR test and fifth grade has thirty-eight. Now, these don't account for the new test type, which is the extended constructive response. So on these interns, it doesn't have that, the new test does have that editing portion in it. Some concerns that we're looking at right now is there wasn't a whole lot of growth with the third grade math, but we are working on that. There were still several objectives that needed to be taught and then we did another benchmark a couple of weeks ago and we did see some growth there. And then our science also has a gap that we're noticing that needs to be worked on. So some of the action plans, we have had data meetings, myself with the teachers after each one of our assessments to look at students and create those individual learning plans and intervention plans. Like I said, that second interim was like at the end of January, we just took a full-length benchmark and we've seen some gains since the second interim on our benchmark. And the full-length benchmark is all of the questions, it's a release test where the interim was only about half of the test. So the fact that we gave them a longer test and we're seeing gains is great. Something else that we've worked on is teachers all have a color-coded chart with each of the categories in your classroom, the kids are numbered, there's final sticky notes and the color categories they can move them after each interim assessment to see the growth. So we want to make sure, you know, if the kid was in red, we want to see them move up to the yellow category, the blue category and the green and we are seeing that progression in our numbers in the red area or the Did Not Needs area that's getting smaller. Those sticky notes also are coded with the special pops, like the colors, so the teachers can also keep an eye out for the special pops, which we get counted for multiple times. So if they see a kid regressing, then they know they need to go look at that and create a plan. Teachers are holding conferences with their students, they're creating data holders with them and kind of helping share that responsibility, like it's asking them, you know, what happened here, you know, why did we see this loss or this gain? What can we do to do better? And then they're also sharing that information with parents, like showing that how the kids are progressing when they're having parent conferences to reach out and know how we're doing. We've created some intense intervention groups where they're being pulled for remediation. All of our third and fifth grade teachers were trained in the lead forward rocking review and what that does is it picks, it does a ten-day review and it tells them what activities they need to do based on the standards that are most tested. And then they do that ten days before they've seen really good gains and so the teachers really enjoy that, they think that it's going to be successful in helping them get the kids prepared in one last review before the actual STAR test. And then specifically for science, I've worked with Ms. Wilkinson to add some science in with her ACE program to help with the fifth grade remediation and then we've added some more instructional time for science and then we've done some tutoring groups as well.
All right, so for the secondary, we see some gains, a lot of gains. Actually, I was pleased to see the green portions of this report. We do have some gains in seventh grade reading, we have some gains in seventh grade math, a big gain in eighth grade math. We went from fifty-one percent non-passing to twenty-four percent. Eighth grade science is another big one. English one, we have some good gains there. English two, we had forty-two percent non-passing in the first class, we went down to eighteen percent. And then of course, the U.S. history was pretty low at the beginning, so we were at close to a nine for the first test and it would kind of stay consistent on that for the second administration. So there's a lot of positive gains here. So mostly, for the majority of the tests, we have decreased in the areas of Did Not Meet, which is a good sign. And there has been movements, if you look at the interim number two, there has been movement from Approaches to Needs, you see a lot of green there, from Approaches to Needs. So that's also positive. And then of course, we are outperforming the region in the upper grade levels, same with elementary. So overall, third grade to E O C, we're sixty-five percent over the region, so that's a good sign.
Okay, we, I'm sorry, but let me say that our region is region twenty. So we're being compared to all the schools in region twenty, which the bulk of those are the San Antonio schools. So it's from San Antonio down this way to equal pass, that's our region. So I think the fact that we do have so many areas that are higher than the region where we're above the region says a lot about our students and our staff, you know? Are we where we want to be yet now that we're making big strides?
Yes. So one thing to keep in mind was that this test was administered at the end of January and since then, there has been plenty of instruction. So some of the things that were tested were obviously new to the kids because they hadn't seen it, but from that time to now, they have been exposed to the content and that should help them a lot. So some of the weaknesses, junior high seems to be our lowest area that we still need to work on. And like I said, actually all areas, I mean, there's always room for improvement, but junior high, we need to focus a little bit more on. We need to move students from the Needs to the Masters. If you look at the Masters on the interim number two, you see very few highlighted in green or secondary. So we definitely need to move in that direction. We need to continue decreasing the Did Not Need percentages, okay? And we're already doing that at that point, we have, like I said, amazing gains and I anticipate that those should be lowered by now. Interventions, we have implemented some things, I'll use eighth grade social studies as an example. It's been stagnant, they stayed, even though the region is at that percentage, at forty-nine, they stayed stagnant for the first administration to the second administration. So we did secure more resources for that teacher. We did invest in a program that gives students a pre-test and based on the pre-test results, they're guided to what they need to work on, okay? So very prescriptive and that's what we need to do. We need to use the data to ensure that the students are getting what they need. So more content has been covered, data-driven decisions. So teachers are always looking at their numbers to see where they stand, okay? Immediately after a test day, we request the results, we want to see the numbers, we want to see the scores. Additional resources, for example, social studies, we're going to share with you. Teachers are targeting students with tutorials during the day. Some think, especially in our sixth grade group, thinks that after school is just too much for the kids, so they have implemented a rotation system at the end of the day where they use computer time to pull those kids and work with the teachers in soccer, okay? So some have done tutorials during the day. We're also taking advantage of the ACE program that's available for some of our junior high kiddos. There's also instruction during class days, I've seen interventions where a teacher will find out, okay, this is a STAR group, a N E O C group, I need to bring them in. And then also, teachers are pretty busy, students are pretty busy, so we also offer before-school and after-school tutorials for those that is broken in for them. The idea is to target all groups to show growth in all areas. So you will see teachers in classrooms working on one-to-one, you will see them working in small groups, you will see them working or a student is working with a peer, increase the rigor because we have to target all areas, even those kids that are at the Masters level. The end result should be is student growth. So we can't forget our low ones, we can't forget our high ones, we have to take into consideration every single group so that we can show growth.
So as you can see, the staff, my administrators and the teachers and our students have been doing a lot of work preparing for STAR. You know, I have often heard, well, you're teaching to the test. Well, the test is based on the TEES, so we teach the TEES, which is required in the state and then we are held accountable by the STAR test. Just a reminder that in twenty-two, twenty-three, we did not get an official accountability rating. We got the what-if rating, which was the B rating. And that is because there is currently lawsuits pending against the Texas Education Agency because of the changes they made last year in the middle of the game. And I think that's always the best way that I can explain it. You know, they changed the rules, they changed the casting standards, they changed the system in the middle of the game and it really impacted quite a good districts. And so because that is still in process in the court systems, they did not release accountability ratings. We have not yet been given an update on what's going to happen for twenty-three, twenty-four, but we continue to work hard, we continue to work with our staff, with our students to ensure that they're getting high-quality education and regardless of the rules, we're going to continue to move forward. So are there any questions on intrums? The next round of tests will be the tests, so we begin testing in April.
So she's using fifth and sixth grade as examples, is that classroom? Is that about the average from last year, taking these interim tests? Or is there a big population in that?
I compare the numbers from past years, the parents have looked at that.
Is that something you'd like to see?
Yep. Those are the COVID children in first grade.
COVID children in first grade are third and fourth graders, no, are fourth and fifth graders right now, yes, fourth and fifth graders.
Yeah, like if you want to see what they expected now on last year.
Yeah, so like let's say last year's fourth graders at STAR, they were eighty percent, okay? Then we would, the goal should be at minimum that at fifth grade, they be at eighty percent.
You mean or forty percent?
Right, and this was in, I have to see interim, interim to interim versus STAR, because STAR would have been at the end of the year.
I have the STAR data, it's not in here.
And I do have the interim report from last year because we actually pulled it out, so I can share that.
I think I always seem like one of the bigger differences is the sixth grade reading to Master to reading, that's like the highest percentage overall on that one. I don't know why, just when the eighth grade science, District Seventy-four in the region, did you say what, is everyone assigned, they didn't follow?
Yes.
Stayed right?
We had to calculate those last minute, I didn't see how.
I agree.
But it's green, yes. That's actually a big one there.
I know.
Compared to the region.
Why would I, I don't know.
Well, our third grade needs, third grade needs to be on that.
That was very unique.
Is it nine percent in interim one?
Oh, yes, now it's twenty-four, so it's weird.
Yeah. That's a good one.
Their color coding gets complicated.
So I'm doing another five years of the Eclipse component.
So we were scheduled to have school on the eclipse day. However, I do have a group of superintendents, we call it the Highway Ninety Superintendent Group, and so we had had a meeting and all schools except for Penipa, Brackett and believe the prior, those were the three, we were the only three counting school. Everybody else on the Highway Ninety corridor had already decided to close on April the eighth. So I reached out to Judge Schuster and asked him for some advice because I had received also a copy of something that the judge in Kirk County had put out about a disaster declaration. And so Judge Schuster and I had a very good conversation, he does have lots of concerns about the population increase during those three days, the fear of being able to get medical attention if we were to need it, the amount of people that will just be parked along the sides of the road. And so he did feel like it was in our best interest for safety reasons to close on that day. So what is posted right now in our board vote has not gone out, hasn't any type of official notice yet because I didn't want to share it with you. Since my conversation with the judge, they also had a meeting on March thirteenth, I was not able to attend, but Ms. Price attended for me. And they are having a couple of different community meetings also in the twentieth and twenty-first. Currently, the hotel is one-hundred percent capacity, the Barbie park is at one-hundred percent capacity and Dry Campy is at one-hundred percent capacity. So they're talking about which streets need to be closed, they have asked us for the use of the football field for the helicopter emergency landing if necessary because they'll be using their area for parking and just basically all the plans that they're trying to put into this place to make sure that our community is safe, the number of deputies that are going to be on duty. So I am, my plan is going to be to go ahead and close on April the eighth and we'll put that information out. Right now, secondary has enough minutes to cover it, elementary does not, they're short minutes. However, with the disaster declaration done by a Kenny County judge, we can apply for a waiver. So that is kind of where we're going, that we will be able to apply for a waiver and we wouldn't have to make up the day. If that doesn't happen, then the plan would be to turn the last main flex day into a instructional day and we would be covered, we would be covered there. So and it would be a school closure for all students and staff.
I heard a lot of, I'm supposed to be being a lot of people related.
We're running the path to telling them. At first, I think we were kind of excited about it, we do have glasses for everybody, so we'll be sending all our students home with glasses, we made that purchase. But lots of districts have chosen even not to take that liability of if a kid takes off the glasses and looks up, you know? So I think there were just lots of things that came out that, you know, we felt that even though it's, the totality is going to be just a few minutes, that it would be better to close just for safety reasons.
Moving on to item six, which is our action items. First is eight, which is the county twenty-fourth review and assessment of the reported test of Texas historic landmark agreements. Four?
Yeah, approach.
Yes.
Hello, everyone. First of all, I want to thank Veronica, this is initially, I had canceled being here because I wasn't sure we would get the report together. We just met on Saturday, we made some adjustments, so this is the final report. And anyone have any questions regarding the report?
Are you going to explain it or are you just saying?
Sure, if you want. Sure, if you want. What that is, is historical properties that are in the fort and there's one in town. And normally, it's not like an entitlement, it's an owner property. They have to apply through THC to get that designation. Once they get that designation, they agree to maintain that house in good condition. And if they do, and they need it, they get twenty-five percent off their property test. If they get a second grade, they get twenty percent. First grade is ten percent. So there's an incentive to maintain those houses. And the ones that got the red, they didn't take care of their properties, for whatever reason. Again, it's their private property, and they have that choice to do it or not.
So red, they pay full taxes?
Full taxes, yes.
There's two kinds of red, though. One was red, and one was red and failed.
I guess same thing. Yeah, they failed. They don't get the exemption. But as you know, Ford Park is, that's the draw to the fort, the sales buildings. And if they're not maintained, excuse me, it just really affects the overall viewing of the fort. Any questions?
You said there's only one property in Brackett that's historic?
Yes, it's the Commissioner's Board's building right across from the jail.
Okay.
And granted, like the museum, the beautiful building is historic, but that's county property. So these are normally private properties.
I know during this whole long process, the gym, did that thing ever approach to become an historical?
I'm still working on getting some kind of grant. But now that I'm here, would you consider, because we can start working on that. But my thought was, I wanted to find some kind of grant to fix it up. And once it's fixed up, then apply for a designation. And again, of course, this is a product submitted to the. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica.
No problem.
Is there any taken with those properties?
Excuse me, one more thing. I would need some of the emails that you approved this, the approved reports.
Okay.
Anybody have any question during this? Those properties up there.
So like, the, when it's, when it's ready, you get a twenty-five percent discount rate per.
When it's red, they don't get anything. But like I mean, they get twenty-five percent.
You're saying half of ten. The reason all of this is because it affects also the taxes for school.
Yes, yes, yes. And it affects their property.
Yeah, for sure.
Ms. Morgan, and the only one that failed in Brackett was Tim Hortons, the one here across from the jail?
That he failed?
That he failed?
No, he got a pass.
Okay, and that failed in Brackett?
That's the one. And many, just because.
He's the only, he's the only.
He's the only one that has the designation. There's other buildings here in Brackett that potentially qualify, but the property owner has to win. And again, they have to follow the rules.
Is there a motion to approve the twenty-two four N R review and assessment of recorded Texas historic landmark progress as presented? Who makes the motion? For second? Ricky seconds, all in favor? Moving on to six B, which is the election service contract between Brackett, I S D, and Kenny County for May fourth, twenty-twenty-four school board election.
So attached, you will find the service, the service contract for our election. And basically, it's that we are going into contact with the county. The, the school district, the county will hold their election together in May. And so it outlines the duties of the election officer, the services of the school district, and then the cost of the services. The cost of services is down under number four. The estimated cost for us to have our election as part of their election is approximately two thousand dollars. And under number five, the general provisions, you can see the different entities who will be part of that election. We will still have our own separate ballot. But the election will be together.
Is it good, or?
There's not enough sheets to write, there are four entities who have no elections.
The lit, the lit is two thousand, and then consider the, yeah, what's the dividend, actually, four thousand, or we're just paying two thousand, or the two thousand?
Two thousand is a deposit.
A deposit.
That's two per portion.
That's just.
It's a deposit, and then the total cost will be divided by four. If it exceeds the two thousand, it will be invoiced. If it doesn't, then it will be refunded. Our question.
Pretty much the same, so.
So what did everyone vote last year, or?
I don't know what they did last year.
The last time we contracted with the county was just two thousand. I think the last time we contracted with them was just the two thousand, we didn't receive the deposit. And now it's three, it's two, this time it's four, and it's two and some. So it should be less.
Should be less.
Is there a motion to approve the election service contract between Kenny County and Brackett, I S D, for the May fourth, twenty-twenty-four school board general election?
Okay.
Who makes the motion? Number seconds, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to, what, is there any budget?
There's no budget on that, just.
Item seven, which is the superintendent's report.
So it's that thing of year where there will be lots of dates listed for your calendar with all sorts of exciting things. This Saturday, we already kick off the junior-senior prom. It'll be held in the gym. We will do the red carpet ceremony at the courthouse. Starts at six o'clock.
Six thirty.
Six thirty. And so kids are excited about that. It's always hard to find a good date with all the athletic events and everything that happens, but it looks like that's, this coming Saturday was a big date for everybody. Our special education students, those that are in our life skills classrooms, will be attending the Special Olympics in Eagle Pass. And so they travel to Eagle Pass and participate in the Special Olympics in that district. Good Friday holiday will be March the twenty-ninth. We have our regularly scheduled board meeting on April the eighth. Oh, on the eclipse.
Well, it's supposed to be on.
Yeah, I think we'll be, we'll be okay. Unless someone's.
Does someone check? Is it on the?
Yes. Yeah, we did get an update on the buses. It looks like it'll be in the fall some time. Yeah. As first they told me October, now they're telling me December.
Well, that's their version, March, April.
Yeah, so it started in March, April, and then they pushed it back to October, and then this last email we got said December. And just that it's not uncommon for buses to be taking about eighteen months. So school districts just really need to plan accordingly, because if you need a bus, you're going to take eighteen months to get.
Just wanted to say that when you said that.
PD day is scheduled for April the twelfth. And again, just a reminder about SLI. SLI isn't until the summer, but on April sixteenth is when housing opens. So Ms. Vitoria will be emailing y'all because we need to confirm, so that way we can make sure that we get our registration done. We have a flex Friday on April nineteenth. Teacher appreciation week will be May sixth through the tenth, and we still have some time to talk about that, but just so y'all have the dates. And then the different awards ceremonies, May twenty-eighth for junior high and high school, junior high eighth grade graduation, May twenty-eighth, kid graduation will be May twenty-ninth. This year, we'll do what we did last year as far as senior awards and then athletic banquet. So we'll do the senior awards and the scholarship ceremony at five-thirty, and then go straight into athletic banquet right afterwards. And we felt like it'd be a really good turnout, and we did it that way. Elementary awards will be on May thirtieth, and then senior graduation is Friday, May the thirty-first. And so those are, a lot of those upcoming dates, I don't have any other questions.
We have no further questions, we're going to move to the election session at seven twenty-one pursuant to gen code five-five-one dot zero seven one, gen code five-five-one dot zero seven four. All right, we're going to come back to the open session at eight thirty-eight. Is there a motion to hire Rebecca Bradfield, elementary teacher?
Elementary teacher.
That one makes the motion. Wait, second. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Next one is, is there a motion to hire?
I think it's, yeah.
Rachel Robinson, also for elementary teacher. Who makes the motion? Number seconds, all those in favor? All passes unanimously. And the next one is to hire Mr. Uwitt?
Miller.
Miller. For.
Ace coordinator.
Kenneth Miller for ace coordinator. Whit makes the motion. Several seconds, all those in favor? All passes unanimously. Do we have to accept, right, the resignation? Or not?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to accept the Mr. James K. letter of resignation effective the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year? Whit makes the motion. Tell me seconds, all those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to teachers' contracts. All right, superintendent's recommendations for term can, term contracts, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion to accept those as listed?
Absolutely.
Second. Tell me makes a motion. Number seconds, all those in favor? Passes five, one abstain. Five zero one abstain. That was Mr. Massimo abstain. All right, next we have the superintendent's recommendation for probationary contracts, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, as presented. So tell me makes the motion. Number seconds, all those in favor? All those opposed. All right, we have five, four, one opposed. And next. Yes. That was the probationary contracts for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Next we have the superintendent's recommendation for the district of innovation, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, as presented. Absolutely. Tell me makes the motion. Several seconds, all those in favor? All right, that passes unanimously. The superintendent's recommendation for part-time educator, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, as presented. Is there a motion? Tell me makes the motion. Several seconds, all those in favor? Passes unanimously. Superintendent's recommendation for non-renewal D O I contract, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, is Mr.?
As presented.
As presented? Whit makes the motions. Several seconds, all those in favor? Passes unanimously.
And then we have the conclusion.
Nothing other, no action to be taken on the conclusion of contracts, which is our entrance. Is that it? No further discussion.
So they're for twenty-four, twenty-five?
You want to go back to that? Do you need a date?
If you can answer, yes.
All right, going back to a Kenneth Miller. A motion to hire Kenneth Miller as an ace coordinator effective?
July one.
July the first. So he makes the motion. Several seconds, all those in favor? All passes unanimously.
And tonight, the teachers are for twenty-four, twenty-five.
His name's on it, so we're good?
Yes.
All right, no further discussion. We'll adjourn our meeting at zero eight four two. Eight forty-two. Thank y'all.
Thank you.